Good evening, and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of April 8th, 2024. And happy Total Solar Eclipse Day of 2024. We see a lot of news coverage lately that just more or less covered political and disasters around our world, but today we understood what nature is all about and the power that nature has as well. Anyway, as my first term concludes, as a Select Board Member, I want to thank my fellow Select Board Members Tom and Mike, our Town Administrator Rick, Town Department Heads and Staff, Boards and Committees, and of course, the residents of Milford for their hard work, passion, and patience and dedication to working together respectively for the benefit and for the betterment of Milford as well. I also appreciate the confidence that the residents had in me and giving me the opportunity to be their Select Board Member for the next three years, and I will not let you down, I can promise you. We are now into our reorganization of our Select Board, and we would now elect our Chairperson for the next year.
I would nominate Mike Walsh as Chairperson.
Thank you, Tom. And I also would second that. Michael, your knowledge of local government and your general knowledge of what local government is all about in the town of Milford is you'll be a great Chairman. This is your second time, Ms. Chair?
Actually, it's my third, correct, Rick?
It might be three.
My third, yes, it's my third.
You have the experience of being Chair as well. Anyway, congratulations, Michael.
That's right, that's right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, gentlemen, for the confidence in making me the next Chairman of the Milford Select Board. I want to take a few minutes to say thank you to Mr. Valani for his leadership in the town of Milford.
Thank you.
And all the department heads who serve this community, and all the people that work for the town and volunteer for the town. Thank you very much for your efforts and everything you do that make this community a great place to be. And it continues to. We have some small issues, and with the people that are employed in this community and the people that volunteer their time in this community, we're able to work through them and continue to make the town of Milford something to be proud of. And that's why I say to people all the time, when you walk around this community, keep your head up, because it's a great community and it's something to be very proud of. And I want the employees in this town to know that they are appreciated, the volunteers that you are appreciated, and that we do care and we do truly listen. And I can speak for myself as well as my other two Board Members. You know, we're here to serve you. It's not the other way around. We're here to serve you. And we listen, and we honestly, in our heart, on a daily basis, try to do the right thing for this community, for the citizens in this community, and hopefully, under my direction this year, we'll continue to do that. And with that, I say thank you very much for the opportunity to serve another year, and let's move forward.
Thank you, Mike.
The first agenda item, and again, thank you to my two Board Members.
Thank you, very welcome.
The first item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant for March 25th, 2024.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Our next agenda item is the approval of the regular session meeting minutes of March 25th, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the regular session meeting minutes, March 25th, 2024.
I second that, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous. And our next business item on the agenda is the approval of the executive session minutes of March 25th, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of March 25th, 2024.
I second that too, Mr. Chair.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Our next agenda item is public hearings. Anybody on public hearings?
We do not have any.
Anybody here for a public hearing?
No, nope.
Okay, good. Okay, our next agenda item is scheduled appointments. Tonight, we have the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee Final Report. Mr. DeLuzio?
I always have a handle.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. DeLuzio.
Good evening, everybody.
If I may, real quick for a second, what I made reference to earlier about the people that volunteer their time. In the audience tonight is not only Mr. DeLuzio, but members of his committee that have volunteered many, many hours to make the Milford Charles Trail, upper, lower, however you want to look at it, a great place. And I had the opportunity, a week ago, I was just killing some time, and I was walking by Louisa Lake, and I just have to tell you, it's absolutely beautiful. And I made reference to it. It's people, like these fine people that are here tonight, that volunteer their time to give back to this community, that make things like the trail a success. And thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. And the floor is yours, Mr. DeLuzio.
Okay. The Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee is here this evening to announce the completion of the 6.5-mile Milford Upper Charles Trail segment of the envisioned 27-mile multi-town Upper Charles Trail and the Route 85 crossing at Walden Way connecting path to the bike trail, and to submit the committee's final report. The handout lists the final report topics I'll be discussing in my remarks. To get oriented, I refer you to the trail map. Phase 1 begins at the trailhead on East Main Street and continues north to Deer Street. Phase 2A continues the trail from Deer Street to the Route 85 parking lot. Phase 2B begins at Route 109 and continues to the Holliston Town Line. Phase 2B also contains a spur from Main Street to the Senior Center. Phase 3 begins at the trailhead on East Main Street and continues to Route 109. The project began some 26 years ago on December 8th, 1997. Upon recommendation of the Conservation Commission Chairman Robert Buckley and the Town Planner, which happened to be me at the time, the Select Board voted to support the Upper Charles Trail development. The Board also authorized the Town Planner to participate, establish the Milford Upper Charles Trail ad hoc committee, and appointed me, Robert Buckley, Michael Brishini, Park Director, Attorney Brian Murray, Carolyn Cooney, a Conservation Commission member, Frank Perello Jr., Agarant Halen Civil Engineer, and Henry Papuga, the Milford Water Company Manager. I served as the Town Planner and Trail Committee Chairman through December 2001, and the Trail Committee Chairman from January 2002 to the present. Although many have served on the committee over time, special recognition is extended to the 11 members who served the longest. Current members Joseph Akuti, Attorney Brian Murray, Frank Perello Jr., Henry Papuga, Elaine Capizello, Jeff Howard, and Frank Melongone, who are all here this evening, and former members Robert Buckley, Michael Brishini, Rosemary Nadelson, Margaret Nolton. Their terms of service range from 12 to the full 26 years. The final report is a chronological consolidation of significant events of the six-and-a-half-mile, three-phase, multifaceted, long-term project involving a variety of disciplines, participants, and funding sources. The report addresses four major elements of each phase: property rights acquisition, abutis, design and permitting, and construction. The issues described in each of these three phases were chosen for their potential impact, the schedule, cost, and our funding sources. In addition, a supplemental project established a safe crossing of Route 85 at Walden Way and an ADA-compliant path to the bike trail. This path also provides a connection from the bike trail to the town's 185 acres of conservation land surrounding the Walden Woods development. As one can tell, I'm sure you can also, the report is not intended for the casual reader. However, it's an excellent reference for those who pursue trail projects involving state and federal funding. I'm now going to present some highlights of the final report. Property rights acquisition. The town had control of only 30% of the six-and-a-half-mile corridor. 31 property rights acquisitions of various farms were acquired of 26 property owners for the remaining 70%. In addition, a permanent easement was acquired from Stone Ridge Management LLC on an undeveloped lot for the connecting path to the bike trail from the Route 85 crossing at Walden Way. Abutis. There was a total of 121 abutis. Nine abutis meetings were held, covering various segments of the corridor. Comments, concerns included privacy, trespassing, safety, drainage, and unauthorized motor vehicles on the trail. All concerns were satisfactorily resolved. Town meetings. A total of 26 trail-related articles over 19 town meetings were presented and passed. Cost and funding. The total cost for the three phases was $6.47 million. The town shares was $580,000 or 9%. Funding sources were federal, state, and the town. The total cost for the Route 85 crossing at Walden Way and the connecting path was $125,000. The town share was $20,000 or 16%. Funding sources were the town, state, and private funds. Volunteer and professional pro bono services were also provided for this supplemental project. Contracts. The committee administered 12 contracts plus a construction cost overrun agreement with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. No cost overrun claims were brought, and no cost recovery proceedings were issued. Now, there were two potential showstoppers. There were two issues with the greatest potential impact. The first involved a conflict between a bike trail and the town's proposed alternate route, commonly referred to as the East Main Street Bypass Road, from Mont Pleasant Street to Route 109. The conflict was resolved by Mass Highway and the town agreeing that the alternate route roadway, if developed, would include bike lanes, and the town could develop an interim path on that segment at the town's expense. The second issue involved National Grid property rights acquisition. Negotiations among National Grid, the town, Massachusetts Executive Office of Transportation, and the Federal Highway Administration had been ongoing for four years. The town was then given six more months to resolve the issue to avoid losing the $3 million allocated for Phase 2. The issue was finally resolved by National Grid agreeing to a 99-year lease acceptable to all parties after 4.5 years of negotiations. Recently proposed trail enhancements. Last year, 12 trail enhancements were brought to the committee for consideration. Eight were deemed worthy of further investigation. Upon investigation, the committee's position was favorable on two of them. The most significant favorable proposal was to expand the trail along Milford Pond from the rear of Summer Street to Dilla Street opposite the Milford Water Department, and then to Plains Park. However, due to the expense and time involved to complete this expansion, the committee recommends the town pursue it at a later date. In closing, the committee has five recommendations for your consideration. Number one, the committee. Since the committee's task to develop the Milford segment of the multi-town Upper Charles Trail has been completed, it is recommended that the committee be dissolved by the Select Board upon receipt of this final report. Number two, continuity. The Milford Upper Charles Trail is one segment of the envisioned 27-mile multi-town Upper Charles Trail. It is also designated as part of the 3,000-mile East Coast Greenway Trail Initiative. The Commonwealth has been, the committee has been the town's representative for these regional initiatives. In addition, there are trail maps, documents, and meeting documents and minutes that need to be retained once the committee is dissolved. Our recommendation is to maintain continuity by designating the Town Planner as the Milford Upper Charles Trail Contact Person, transfer maps and documents to the Planning and Engineering Department website, excuse me, and keep the Trail Committee website available under other boards and committees to access agenda and minutes. The Town Planner and IT Department concurred with this recommendation. Number three, maintenance. The Park Commission, Highway Department, Police Department, and Friends of the Milford Upper Charles Trail have agreed to their respective maintenance responsibilities, excuse me, via a memorandum of understanding. Our recommendation is that the memorandum of understanding remain in effect. Number four, comprehensive maintenance assessment. Our recommendation is that a comprehensive maintenance assessment be conducted every two years and a report issued. A reference for guidance is the 2018 Comprehensive Maintenance Assessment Report, which is available on the town's website. Number five, proposed trail enhancements. Our recommendation is that A, the Parks Commission be consulted for all proposed trail enhancements, which is the current practice, and B, proposed enhancement initiatives receiving favorable consideration to be pursued by the proponent or an ad hoc committee appointed by the Park Commission or the Select Board. Finally, the committee respectfully requests the Board vote this evening to dissolve the committee and to accept recommendation number two in order to maintain continuity. We leave the decision on the remaining recommendations to the pleasure of the Board. In conclusion, the committee extends the appreciation to the Select Boards, Departments, Committees, Commissions, and Town Meetings for their unwavering support over the past 26 years, even when faced with seemingly insurmountable obstacles. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to refer to you as Reno, because that's what I know you as, and I feel very comfortable calling you that instead of Mr. DeLuzio.
You can, right? If I can call you Mike.
Just before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just want to say, your final report is exactly what I would have expected, what we would have expected. Very efficiently done, and every i dotted and every t crossed. So again, to you and to your committee, I say thank you very, very much. Phenomenal job, and the precision, and I just think of this map, I chuckled to myself. I said, if that isn't Reno. Very, very right to the point, very precise, very accurate, and thank you very much. And with that, I'll open it up to my colleagues.
Yeah, you know, the work you've done is amazing. This is one of the top gems in this community, without a question. You know, Reno mentioned some of the concerns, and I was sitting in a seat at that time where we had to consider some of those concerns, because we're talking to other communities that were seeing some things that we never saw, and that really concern neighbors and the abutis understandably. You know, this is going to bring people here to do bad things instead of having a gem in the community that everybody enjoys, and really has made an incredible significant difference in this community. Reno and I said several times, and I gave him my commitment that I thought this was going to be really, really something to change the landscape of who we are as a community. And bypass road aside, because all that was just shifting traffic here or there, and we already know the bypass road, right? If you live in this community, you know how to go over the hill. I mean, it's that easy. Hit Central Street, you made it, and you're not sitting on East Main. So I think what you brought forward, and ultimately what you did, is really incredible. And the fact that you involved everyone, everyone, and they came around to believe as you did, as we did, you know, Mike was on the board then, the position I was in. I believe that you were doing the absolute fantastic work, and I'm so proud as a resident, as someone who loves this community. I'm very proud of everything you accomplished, and it wasn't easy.
By no means.
Even now, there's no easy steps, and I understand that. And a lot of people, you know, they may not, and I raised that for that reason, that I know the angst that you faced at different times, and I commend you for everything you've done, and I'll await to make the motion to accomplish what was suggested by Reno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. DeLuzio, thank you so much, and thank you for your committee. Great job, and like it says, it wasn't easy. Anything that takes 26 years isn't easy either, believe me. But like I said, it's definitely, like Tom has mentioned, a definite gem to our community. The multiple benefits that you have, you know, safe routes residents can look at, natural preservation that we have in our town. Not only that, but it also boosts the health and well-being of people who use it, gives them a chance to walk around, move around, and enjoy it as well. It's not just doing exercise, you're enjoying that as you go about doing it. Like I said, it's definitely a credit to our town. You are in the committee as well. And again, thank you for all you do, and like I said, we'll continue to support anything we can when it comes to this project, too. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And if I may, to the residents of this community, to the people who use the trail, I'd like you to just, when you're walking on that trail in any area at all, and you're admiring how beautiful it is and how peaceful it is, I want you to think of the people that served this community on a volunteer basis for many, many years to put that project to where it is today. And I bring that up because people volunteer their time, many, many hours, many days, people spent working through obstacles that were coming along the way to continue that trail. I used the latest one, Reno, that we were involved in, was the crossing of 85 up by Walden Woods. And people worked through it and got it done. And so when you're admiring the trail on a beautiful sunny day, I want you to just think of the number of hours and the people that worked on that project to take it from start to finish, and just say thank you. Just say thank you to those people that volunteered their time and made it happen. And again, I say to all of you, thank you very, very much for your service to this community.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Perel?
Tom, you were involved in the very beginning when we had to develop our regulations. You were very useful in that effort.
Thank you.
One of the first communities that were able to put that together early on, as we recognized it had to be controlled, and Tom was a great asset in helping us get through that. There are many, many war stories here.
Yeah, there are.
This could have been 150 pages, and I still wouldn't have covered it all. Some of them kept me up at night.
Right?
Well, I'd like to thank Reno's wife for sharing freedom with you, because she's here tonight, and, you know, I'm sure that Reno spent a lot of time, and is retirement on the committee, doing work for us, and she approved it.
She's here tonight because she wants to make sure I don't sign up for another project.
When I see the two of you together, I take a one, so.
I've been blessed with two things. First was my wife. Obviously, she's been extraordinarily patient over 26 years, and she's been very supportive. And the second, I've had reasonably good health, so I could continue.
Blessed.
And then with this gang, you know, we couldn't lose them. They just stood with it, and they did. Very, very helpful.
Thank God we had all of you folks. With that, I'll stand a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we dissolve the Milford Upper Charles Trail Committee, and that has to go to town meeting, if I'm correct.
No. Well, you're the appointing agency, and you can dissolve them, and the second one too, we'd appreciate.
I don't like to slay anything, so, okay. The second thing is that all of the materials and information from the committee be transmitted to the Town Planner, and they will be maintained there for continuity. And lastly, that the memorandum of understanding remain in effect between the departments, and that changes not be made without the approval of the Select Board, given that it involves a number of departments that fall within the purview of the Select Board.
I second that too, Mr. Chairman.
Gladly make that unanimous.
I got one more.
Sure.
Recommendation number two has to go along with recommendation number one, in that, to maintain continuity, we have to transfer all the documentation to the Planning and Engineering Department.
I indicated that, that everything will be transmitted to the Town Planner for continuity.
All right, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Don't have to get up. Thank you.
It's a little bit of a ruffle, but I do.
Well, you work. We'll see you again. You're not done yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, my friend.
I think I might have withdrawal symptoms.
Bye, Frank.
Now, your wife's going to find something for you to do.
I know, Bob. He's going to wish he was on the committee.
Different. Thank you. Thank you again. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Three items tonight. One, I want to alert everyone, we have two wine and malt, or wine and malt with cordials alcohol licenses. They are available. Anyone wishing to apply for such a license should go to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission website, they can complete an application, and then submit the application to the Select Board for consideration. I anticipate scheduling a meeting possibly in June for the Board to review any applications received, and then determine whether or not to award one, two, or none of the applications submitted. Second item is just a reporting one, Tree City USA Approval. This was something that was started by Chuck Renault a number of years back. We're pleased to report that we have again been approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The third item is just a notice to everyone that the first Milford Comprehensive Plan Community Meeting will be held on Monday, May 13th, 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in the Milford Upper Town Hall. This will be an introduction to the comprehensive plan. There will be interactive exercises to learn about residents' vision for the town, including challenges and opportunities that are available for the town. There will be light refreshments, and we will have interpretation services to be offered. So hopefully, we can get the residents to show up and voice their opinion on what we may want to do going forward. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any members have any comments?
Thank you, Rick. Thank you very much.
Okay. Next agenda item is old business, and again, I'm going to refer this back to you.
Yeah, if you remember, the Board at some point allowed me to have a hearing to determine whether or not we should issue an outdoor license. We did have one such hearing. It's the Milford Hospitality LLC, DBA Rail Trail Flatbread Company, 223 Main Street, Milford. We did have a hearing, a public hearing. The applicant representing rail trail was Jaceph Kleinerman. He was present to give evidence in favor of the application. He provided photos showing the owner's installed ballers. That was recommended by Fire Chief Nelson. There were no residents or anyone else at the hearing, and I did issue the license, and all I would ask is the Board to ratify that decision.
Motion to ratify, please?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Town Administrator as it relates to outside service at Milford Hospitality LLC, doing businesses rail trail flatbread at 223 Main Street.
I second that, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Rick, too, for taking the time to have this hearing with them. Like I said, it's a fairly new establishment, and it's definitely, provides a benefit for our downtown, which is already is doing. our downtown, which it's already is doing. We all know that outdoor seating appeals to a lot of customers.
No question.
You know, and that's a way to help their business, you know? And where you're increasing seating capacity, you're also increasing the opportunity to provide more profits. And it's just brought, all we said throughout the time I've been here, anything we can reasonably do to help out our businesses is, you know, we'll, we'll definitely do. So I definitely second that motion to ratify this.
And I would make that unanimous as well. And again, thank you very much, Rick.
Thank you.
For everything. Next agenda item is new business, and the first item under new business is a permit obstruction to, permit to obstruct from St. Mary's Parish. St. Mary's Parish has submitted a permit to obstruct for a candlelight procession in honor of Our Lady of Fatima following Mass on Monday, May 13, 2024, at around 8:00 p.m. The procession will begin at the church down Winter Street to East Main Street to Pearl Street to Granite Street, and return to the church. The police chief has approved this permit. Any board member?
This is an annual occurrence, so I would make a motion that we approve the procession for Father Peter at St. Mary's Parish. For, the date was, let me just grab that again, just escaped me.
May 13.
May 13. And Father said from 7:00 p.m. to, which I really appreciate, around 8:15. So I would make a recommendation that we approve it from 6:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., so that Father has time to organize and move the procession with the assistance of the Police Department.
And I second that motion to approve the permit to obstruct.
And I would, I would make that unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item under new business, the Italian-American War Veterans Post 40, looking for a one-day liquor license. The Italian-American Veterans Post 40 has filed an application for a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for their bike run fundraiser to be held on Saturday, May 18, 2024, at the Italian Vets. I have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the bike run and the all-alcohol license for the dinner and the program at the Vets, Italian-American War Veterans Post 40. This is related to, you know, a veteran who paid the ultimate sacrifice. Remember the United States Marines, you know, Atacchio. I, this is something that has been occurring for a number of years and has benefited a number of people in the community. It's significant fundraisers. So again, given the time periods, I know that they ask for nine to nine. Mr. Chairman, I would recommend for May 18, 2024, from eight o'clock to 10 o'clock, which gives them an hour to set up, and it gives them an hour to close up, as we do with any other establishment pursuant to the alcoholic beverage laws.
Can I gladly second that motion, too, Mr. Chairman?
And I would make that unanimous as well. Next item under new business is the approval from the Board, the Select Board, for the annual Town Meeting Warrant. We have the warrant in front of us. Does any member have any questions about the warrant?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve the annual Town Meeting Warrant to be held on May 20, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 20, 2024.
I second that, too, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I would make that unanimous. And our last order of business under new business is the letter of retirement from our tax collector. We have a letter here from Teresa Diaz. Dear Mr. Valani, it is with a heavy heart. I am writing to inform you, I will be retiring from my position as tax collector on July 6, 2024. I would like to thank my staff, Jennifer Brown and Ryan Mabey, for their dedication to me, the office, and the taxpayers of this community. Sincerely, Teresa Diaz, Tax Collector, Town of Milford. Motion to accept.
Chairman, I make a motion to accept, and I, we ought to send a thanks and gratitude to Terry. She's always done a great job, and the staff in that office, you know, it's tough when you're collecting people's taxes, yet they're very, very, you know, kind and respectful and go out of their way to try to help people who are trying to maneuver that process. I have the utmost respect for each and every one of them, and in particular, Terry. I think she's done a great job. We owe her a debt of gratitude, and I know she's leaving with a heavy heart, and I hope that when all is said and done, that it will actually ease some of that, and she'll go into retirement happy that she's there.
I agree, Tom, and Mike, Mr. Chair. Like I says, she's done so much, and like I said, she makes something as difficult as paying your taxes a little easier. I believe also, too, Rick, recall if I'm wrong, that she was more or less just out of the online payment when she became the tax collector, which I think was a tremendous benefit to the residents of Milford as well, to save them from taking a trip down here as well. And like I says, our gratitude to her and many thanks, and our best to her in the future. So I make a motion, I second that motion to accept her retirement as well.
Before I make that unanimous, I'd like to say to Teresa, thank you very much for your years of service to the community. Your beautiful smiling face will be missed at that counter. Every day I go by there, when I'm in Town Hall, not only you, but all your employees smiling and very happy and do a great job for the community. And as my fellow board members said, you will definitely be missed, and we do wish you, in your future endeavors, you know, the best. The very, very, very best. And again, thank you very, very much, and I would make that unanimous.
Say something on new business, too.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, I just want to thank Terry, working with her for the last 11 years. She's been most helpful. I learned a great deal from her about the tax collection process, foreclosure, et cetera. I also want to just bring something to the Board, and I'm not looking for any real discussion or anything, but my recommendation is going to be at this point, that in this situation, we might want to consider and should consider a treasurer-collector combined position. Most communities do that now. We did a survey, and out of 120 surveyed, 100 have that position. I did take the liberty of adding that position to Article 2. You'll see it on your warrant. The only reason I did it so quickly is that Terry kind of surprised me. I did not think she was going to retire. So I will be putting together some information and possibly posting the position. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight.
Thank you very much.
Obviously, I welcome your thoughts anytime, given, you know, we can discuss further. But yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to make, on the new, new business, even though it's not on the agenda, just to make, just to inform the Board that the ad hoc committee for the comprehensive plan met with the Planning Board on Tuesday, April 2nd, and we met with various members of the MAC, MAPC planners, and they went over where they are right now. What they did, which I thought was pretty good for a great start, is they're trying to lay a foundation of what Milford would need or where, direction they should go. So they actually had a half-hour Zoom call on Wednesday, March 27th. On Thursday, March 28th, they interviewed 26 individuals, 15 town departments, 11 boards and committees, and any additional interviews that they felt as though it would be needed, they're going to be interviewing them as well. In, in your packet that you have here, they would have more or less grounds that they covered, that were given ideas and suggestions by the municipal employees and town departments. They also, like what Rick was mentioning, a community meeting on May 13th. That's going to be the first town-wide vision session, and they're going to be introducing the comprehensive plan process, they're going to identify components of a community vision, and identify challenges to be addressed with this plan. So again, they're moving right along. Hopefully, if things go smoothly, we would have this plan finished by March 31, 2025.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Tom, any comments?
I do not.
Okay. I do not as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here for invitation to speak? Anybody online? Not seeing anybody. Next agenda item is correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondents to see?
I do not, Mr. Chairman. I do not, Mr. Chairman, no.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I do not as well. We do have an executive session tonight. The executive session is Loughlin versus the Town of Milford in Worcester Superior Court, receive communication legal advice regarding the reasonable anticipated litigation or legal issues, the disclosure of which could compromise the town's position. We are going to go into executive session, so this will require a roll call vote.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, we, you will not be coming back out into public. Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss Loughlin versus Town of Milford at all Worcester Superior Court civil action to receive attorney-client communications of legal advice regarding reasonably anticipated litigation or legal issues, the disclosure of which would compromise the town's position.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I would make that unanimous. We need a roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. And as Select Board Member, Mr. Loughlin, said, we will not be returning to regular session.
Mr. Chairman, I will be recusing myself for obvious reasons, as it relates to me personally, so I will be leaving the meeting prior to engage in an executive session, so the public knows.
And I have a motion.
That I have left.
Agenda regular meeting for April 8.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
And I would make that unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good evening, and hope you have a nice week, and look forward to another great year. Thank you very much.